All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, March 27, 2024. It's 9:12 a.m. My name is Tim Entor, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier. We have Commissioner Emily Claus here, Commissioner Mahia, Carolina Mahia on Zoom, and Commissioner Edwards expected to Zoom in any moment. Public can follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have three hours for this work session with four distinct topics. Probably take a break about halfway through. The first 60 minutes is dedicated to an executive session pursuant to RCW 423112, litigation that the agency reasonably believes may be commenced by or against the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in official capacity. Service contract amendment request is the topic, and Commissioner's action may follow. So if you are listening in live, we will be back around 10:13 to check in, either extend the session or resume the agenda with item two. But at this point, we're going to go into executive session.
Thank you.
Okay, it's ten fourteen AM. We completed the executive session that constituted item one on the agenda. There's no official comm action following that. So we're moving on to item two. This morning, which is twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five comp plan and development code docket update. And this is the prioritization exercise just flowing from the work we did last earlier this week to choose which items would be on the docket now. Go through the prioritization exercise and I'm looking to Josh.
Yeah, great. I'm looking to the county managers, make sure, nothing more to say? Great, okay, excellent. So I just wanted to start off with appreciation for the work that was done earlier this week. The Board of County Commissioners really, I think, took the time to consider thoughtfully the information that was provided to them from the applicants. I was impressed. That was, I would say, one of the most efficient and respectful docket conversations that we've had in the past few years. It's been building towards this point and getting better each year, but that thus far has been the best. And I just wanted to provide my appreciation to the Board of County Commissioners for accepting the work of the staff and seeing that, you know, our job is to facilitate the conversation, provide you the information that the community has provided to us, and ensure that it's encapsulated in a way that makes sense and is thoughtful and, again, respectful for the dialogue in our community. Today, what we'll do, as Commissioner Schirminster said, we'll do a ranking exercise. You should have been provided the sheets to provide your scores. The scores that come back to us in that ranking are being compiled as we speak. I want to make sure that commissioners understand that was not a test. It was an exercise, that there is no necessarily right answer. This is your opportunity to provide us your perspective in terms of the prioritization of our work. And as you'll recall in the previous briefing that we had, we did have a conversation about resources. We have the resources of the staff. We have the resources of the planning commission, which is the amount of days and hours in a week, in a year, excuse me. And then we have the Board of County Commissioners, and it requires public process and all of that. So thinking of those staff resource constrictions, the board resource constrictions, and the planning commission resource constrictions, part of this dialogue. And so when you're thinking of prioritization, you're thinking of where do you want staff to get their information first to head towards the planning commission? What do we need to do that's already required of us? What do we need to do in terms of your perspective as an elected official? So that's what we'll move forward on today, is the prioritization. And know that this ranking exercise starts us off with a baseline, and then we can have, the board can have a conversation from there about priorities and thinking about finalization. So, again, this is an opportunity for a conversation, for a dialogue with the baseline, starting with the ranking sheets. Anything further? Oh, Ashley, there was a question on the table about the Jackson application from Chair Minster on the legality of the request. Would you please address Commissioner Minster's question?
Yeah, so we checked in with legal counsel and they indicated there would be no violation of the Growth Management Act by the board to consider that Jackson rezone application.
So our presumption is it stays as it was relayed from Monday? Unless you have any further questions on that?
Do, was it Travis that you were checking in with? Okay, I'll probably just set up a separate with Travis. Because, I mean, I like to go through, I'm curious about the legal analysis provided in the future wise letter on all of that. All, you know, just kind of walking through so I have that sense. For this purpose, I think that's fine.
Yep, and he did highlight, as we know, additional analysis is done as part of a rezone application, and that that would be done for the Jackson rezone application as well as any other rezone application that gets docketed. But that to put it on the docket and consider it is well within the board's purview.
Sure.
Commissioner, I wish to have a question.
As we're going along here on this prioritization, like the Shoreline Master Program, I mean, why should we prioritize that as twelve because we're waiting on another jurisdiction, maybe for a year before they're going to do anything? So why should we burn up our prioritization of that? I guess.
There's a similar question that was asked yesterday afternoon as well.
It's a conversation Emily and I were having prior to the meeting too. I was like, I scored it low because it's gonna happen no matter what.
Yeah, okay.
I did the opposite. I scored it high because I was like, once it comes through, I want to be sure.
I wanted to go first.
Well, I don't care about that, but it doesn't come through for a year and.
Well, then staff wouldn't be doing anything.
Well.
If we put it too high, they're just gonna sit there and stare at a piece of paper.
They're gonna sit there and wait for the shoreline player to come.
It's the highest priority.
You, you probably have more faith in government than I do. I have not much faith.
I've been given my directions.
And so I appreciate that the commissioners want to jump right into the dialogue. And that's the things that we want to have that conversation. We will not, if we have not received information back from ecology, we won't be sitting there waiting. I have faith in the staff that they'll be able to move on to the next topic while we're waiting. But that perspective is exactly, I think there was another conversation about is nine, is the big number better, or should it be a one? All of these things, good dialogue, we're all learning as we go, and I appreciate the conversation. Again, this is.
Matt, is it a golf score or a football?
And it's golf.
So, yeah, I have the same thing like with the placeholder items, you know, I put those low because you don't even know if they're gonna happen.
Yep, code clarifications and.
Yeah, but shoreline was different because we know that's coming. Okay, so.
And, yeah, you have the questions from the board, and then we'll check in on the ranking.
Commissioner Claus had a question, and it kind of prompted a question for me about the Martin Way. Can we talk about that one for a second?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So last year when we did the, when we passed everything with the Lacey Joint Plan included, that had the low density consolidation component, and I was wondering if that has, if that's kind of what they're doing here with the Martin Way rezone.
This is a case of a parcel that is just a split rezone, and if it had come in earlier, it probably would have been pulled into the Lacey Joint Plan, but it's just a case where the front portion of the property is own commercial and the southern portion of the property is still residential, but there's a business on the front end. And so it just makes it really hard to figure out which standards apply where.
So not connected?
Not connected.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions from the board?
So we're putting up the results as a comprehensive plan.
This is fun.
We're still waiting on.
What is it, what is it? Yeah, there are some I don't understand completely, which is why I'm struggling to finish it. I have my.
One second, please, Commissioner Claus, tell us your questions.
Okay, so I've got my first six, but there are some that I don't know how to rate because I don't totally understand what they mean.
Sure.
The transfer of development rights and purchase of development rights program is one of them. Do you want me to just read you the ones that I am unsure on?
Sure, let's go through that list, and then we'll go back and provide a review overview.
So, yeah, transfer of development rights, the CIPA comment period timelines, permit review process, annual update, less restrictive alternative housing code, code clarifications and corrections, and then the cannabis one is pretty straightforward. I just haven't rated that one yet because I don't know where it would fit when I understand all these other ones.
So the transfer of development rights and purchase of development rights program, that's part of that suite of land conservation incentive programs that the county has, and came up a lot during our agriculture work the last two years. It's a really important piece of the puzzle around farmland conservation, and we do have a grant to support a lot of that work.
Okay.
And that is an active grant that the board approved earlier this year, and we're just actually in the RFP review stage. So that's, those are some of the context for that one. CIPA comment period timelines, this is one, I don't know if Commissioner Minster, you want to share what you've heard about CIPA? CIPA comment period timelines.
I won't be able to give you the details, but the concept is that when our timeline, when something is is evaluated by staff and it triggers like a CIPA review, then there is like a really short timeline for people to comment, and there were community groups that said, you know, on really big potential projects, and they were like, we have to get our group together. We have to decide if we want to hire a lawyer to give us the legal, you know, we gotta decide if we have money to do that. I mean, to give them fourteen days to do all that is like not reasonable. So the proposal, I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but the proposal is to do some extension of public comment so that a group that had concerns would have, and especially when they're not just a rich person, but an actual organization, community-based organization, could actually get together, figure out if they wanted to take a position, in some cases, they needed to hire a legal counsel. And so it was just to have a discussion about finding some middle ground on the CIPA timeline commentary.
Okay.
I would say that's an accurate review, and so you can see that the topic is neutral because, so we received that comment from folks that wanted more time on the CIPA review. And then separately, we received input from developer applicants that say that the CIPA review time should be shortened. And so we wanted a full, clear look at what the state law is, what the parameters for the board has in terms of lengthening or shortening, and knowing that it's a topic that has multiple perspectives.
Can I do a follow-up on the staff analysis, though? You know, because when I read the staff analysis, I mean, it says, you know, they're identified under WAC and timelines may not be shortened, state law specifies when comment appearance may be extended in specific situations, which the county already implements. So, you know, I kind of struggled with that one because it's like, then how much are we really looking into this if it's already kind of really laid out, like?
We were being responsive to the request.
So prioritizing the CIPA one doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be more or less time. It just means you're gonna figure it out.
We're going to provide more information to the Board of County Commissioners on the parameters of what could potentially take place. And as Commissioner Minster, excuse me, Commissioner Mejia just relayed, we put in our cursory review of what we believe the parameters are at this time.
Okay.
Doing the work of the staff and seeing that, you know, our job is to facilitate the conversation, provide you the information that the community has provided to us and ensure that it's encapsulated in a way that makes sense and is thoughtful and again respectful for the dialogue in our community. Today, what we'll do, as Commissioner Schirminster said, we'll do a ranking exercise. You should have been provided the sheets to provide your scores. The scores that come back to us in that ranking are being compiled as we speak. I want to make sure that commissioners understand that was not a test. It was an exercise, that there is no necessarily right answer. This is your opportunity to provide us your perspective in terms of the prioritization of our work. And as you'll recall in the previous briefing that we had, we did have a conversation about resources. We have the resources of the staff. We have the resources of the planning commission, which is the amount of days and hours in a week in a year, excuse me. And then we have the board of county commissioners. And it requires public process and all of that. So thinking of those staff resource constrictions, the board resource constrictions, and the planning commission resource constrictions, part of this dialogue. And so when you're thinking of prioritization, you're thinking of where do you want staff to get their information first to head towards the planning commission? What do we need to do that's already required of us? What do we need to do in terms of your perspective as an elected official? So that's what we'll move forward on today, is the prioritization and know that this ranking exercise starts us off with a baseline. And then we can have, the board can have a conversation from there about priorities and thinking about finalization. So again, this is an opportunity for a conversation, for a dialogue with a baseline, starting with the ranking sheets. Anything further? Oh, Ashley, there was a question on the table about the Jackson application from Chair Minster on the legality of the request. Would you please address Commissioner Minster's question?
Yeah, so we checked in with legal counsel and they indicated there would be no violation of the Growth Management Act by the board to consider that Jackson rezone application.
So our presumption is it stays as it was relayed from Monday. Unless you have any further questions on that.
Was it Travis that you were checking in with? Okay, I'll probably just set up a separate with Travis because I mean, I like to go through, I'm curious about the legal analysis provided in the future wise letter on all that, all, you know, just kind of walking through so I have that sense. For this purpose, I think that's fine.
Yep, and he did highlight, as we know, additional analysis is done as part of a rezone application and that that would be done for the Jackson rezone application as well as any other rezone application that gets docketed. But that to put it on the docket and consider it is well within the board's purview.
Commissioner, I wish to have a question.
As we're going along here on this prioritization, like the Shoreline Master Program, I mean, why should we prioritize? I prioritize that as 12 because we're waiting on another jurisdiction, maybe for a year before they're going to do anything. So why should we burn up our prioritization of that? I guess.
There's a similar question that was asked yesterday afternoon as well.
It's a conversation Emily and I were having prior to the meeting too. I was like, I scored it low because it's going to happen no matter what.
Yeah, okay.
I did the opposite. I scored it high because I was like, once it comes through, I want to be sure.
I wanted to go first.
Well, I don't care about that, but it doesn't come through for a year and.
Well, then staff wouldn't be doing anything.
If we put it too high, they're just going to sit there and stare at it.
They're going to sit there and wait for the Shoreline play to come.
It's the highest priority.
You probably have more faith in government than I do. I have not much faith.
I've been given my directions.
And so I appreciate that the commissioners want to jump right into the dialogue. And that's the things that we want to have that conversation. We will not, if we have not received information back from ecology, we won't be sitting there waiting. I have faith in the staff, that they'll be able to move on to the next topic while we're waiting. But that perspective is exactly, I think there was another conversation about is nine, is the big number better or should it be a one? All of these things, good dialogue, we're all learning as we go and I appreciate the conversation. Again, this is.
Matt, is it a golf score or a football?
And it's golf.
So, yeah, I have the same thing like with the placeholder items, you know, I put those low because you don't even know if they're going to happen.
Yep, code clarifications and.
Yeah, but Shoreline was different because we know that's coming.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Yeah, you have the questions from the board and then we'll check in on the ranking.
Commissioner Claus had a question and it kind of prompted a question for me about the Martin Way. Can we talk about that one for a second?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So last year when we did the, when we passed everything with the Lacey joint plan included that had the low density consolidation component, and I was wondering if that has, if that's kind of what they're doing here with the Martin Way rezone.
This is a case of a parcel that is just a split rezone and if it had come in earlier, probably would have been pulled into the Lacey joint plan, but it's just a case where the front portion of the property is own commercial and the southern portion of the property is still residential, but there's a business on the front end.
Okay.
And so it just makes it really hard to figure out which standards apply where.
So not connected?
Not connected.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions from the board?
So we're putting up the results as a comprehensive plan.
This is fun.
We're still waiting on.
Yeah, there are some I don't understand completely, which is why I'm struggling to finish it.
Please, Commissioner Claus, tell us your questions.
Okay, so I've got my first six, but there are some that I don't know how to rate because I don't totally understand what they mean.
Sure.
The transfer of development rights and purchase of development rights program is one of them. Do you want me to just read you the ones that I am unsure on?
Sure, let's go through that list and then we'll go back and provide a review overview.
So yeah, transfer of development rights, the CIPA comment period timelines, permit review process, annual update, less restrictive alternative housing code, code clarifications and corrections, and then the cannabis one is pretty straightforward. I just haven't rated that one yet because I don't know where it would fit when I understand all these other ones.
So the transfer development rights and purchase development rights program, that's part of that suite of land conservation incentive programs that the county has and came up a lot during our agriculture work the last two years, is a really important piece of the puzzle around farmland conservation. And we do have a grant to support a lot of that work.
Okay.
And that is an active grant that the board approved earlier this year and we're just actually in the RFP review stage.
Oh, okay.
So that's, those are some of the context for that one. CIPA comment period timelines, this is one, I don't know if Commissioner Minster, you want to share what you've heard about CIPA, CIPA comment period timelines?
I won't be able to give you the details, but the concept is that when our timeline, when something is evaluated by staff and it triggers like a CIPA review, then there is like a really short timeline for people to comment. And there were community groups that said, you know, on really big potential projects and they were like, we have to get our group together, we have to decide if we want to hire a lawyer to give us the legal, you know, we got to decide if we have money to do that. I mean, to give them 14 days to do all that is like not reasonable.
Yeah.
So the proposal, I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but the proposal is to do some extension of public comment so that a group that had concerns would have, and especially when they're not just a rich person, but an actual community based organization could actually get together, figure out if they wanted to take a position, in some cases they needed to hire a legal counsel. And so it was just to have a discussion about finding some middle ground on the CIPA timeline comment period.
Okay.
I would say that's an accurate review. And so you can see that the topic is neutral because, so we received that comment from folks that wanted more time on the CIPA review. And then separately, we received input from developer applicants that say that the CIPA review time should be shortened. And so we wanted a full, clear look at what the state law is, what the parameters for the board has in terms of lengthening or shortening and knowing that it's a topic that has multiple perspectives.
Can I do a follow up on the staff analysis though? You know, because when I read the staff analysis, I mean, it says, you know, they're identified under WAC and timelines may not be shortened, state law specifies when comment appearance may be extended in specific situations, which the county already implements. So, you know, I kind of struggled with that one because it's like then, how much are we really looking into this if it's already kind of really laid out like?
We were being responsive to the request.
So prioritizing the CIPA one doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be more or less time, it just means you're going to figure it out?
We're going to provide more information to the board of county commissioners on the parameters of what could potentially take place. And as Commissioner Minster, excuse me, Commissioner Mejia just relayed, we put in our cursory review of what we believe the parameters are at this time.
Okay, thank you. And then the next one was permit review process annual update.
Yeah, so this is really an opportunity to take feedback from the development services group regarding permit review processes that might need to be updated. A good example of one that we know of is there are references to a binding site plan review process, but there really is no process identified. So this just allows us to be more responsive. We'd be working with the planning commission to define exactly what goes into this annual update and then working with them to suss out the details part comes to the board.
So this like, once it's complete, would alleviate a lot of the permitting struggles that people have when they're trying to develop? Is that kind of the gist or not really?
It's exploring what may potentially alleviate some of those concerns. So Commissioner Edward sometimes says, why can't you just get rid of one of those things and just go forward? Once in a while, we find one of those sticky things where it is complicated and confusing. And this would be an opportunity to not get stuck when we find those things, we'd have a placeholder to put that into and bring it to the board quickly. Right now, we don't have that ability to be nimble when we find a sticky code thing that's holding up our process.
Okay. Thank you. And then the LRA one?
I think we'll shift to Assistant County Manager Geller for update on that.
So the LRA specifically is dealing with less restrictive alternatives for sexually violent predators who had been civilly committed and through a proportionate share are looking to by court order be dispersed back to their community of origin. We don't have any, anything on the books within local code that sort of identifies that as a land use and/or a process for citing. We did make an attempt to go through the state legislature this year and didn't get any traction. So I think part of the equation, there is, there's something that we could do locally. But part of it is, I think, having that conversation with the board is, do we try to do something on the books locally or do we continue to try to push for statewide change that would actually benefit all jurisdictions? Which I think can be much more comprehensive at that level.
Okay.
Kids out, try to do something, right?
Oh yeah, there's something on the books.
So if we would have had this in place when the whole, when everything happened in Tanao that was fought against by the people who live there?
Correct.
This would have helped, like, understand, helped everyone understand what the, like...
But it's the, you know, where, what's this, what are the citing requirements?
Yeah.
I mean, access to appropriate levels of either septic or preferably sewer, citing in relation to distances from other community services, whether it's bus station, public infrastructure, schools, et cetera.
And public notice.
Public notice is a big part of it.
There were a lot of land use considerations that never really got discussed because everybody was.
Yeah.
Upset about a whole different set of situations, but the land use elements were, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't have a home and like rent to six Evergreen students in that zoning.
Yeah.
But you could have this kind of home, but yet the same considerations of, you know, water and sewer and what kind of septic, do you have a robust enough septic system? And some of the other, all the zoning considerations would be the same.
Yeah.
But yet it seemed like the state law implied that it would supersede, but we never really got clear. So, you know, and then it seemed like there was latitude for local jurisdictions to clarify where and how these things could be managed in a way that fit better with land use policy.
Okay.
And that application was removed, so we didn't keep, we didn't end up having to go.
And it's, so it is that providing clarity within the framework of the preemptions that state law has on local governments.
So I think it's like two different tracks. So the track that we're trying to follow is concerned more with land use, public notice, and then the fix that we're trying to do with the legislature is with the state actually working with the local jurisdictions when going through this process, which we didn't see at all during the Maytown incident.
Just as the contracting.
Okay, thank you, that helps a lot.
Housing?
What's that?
Housing was next.
I think that the next one was the code clarifications and corrections.
So this is an annual update we have had and it was really successful in the last docketing cycle and a lot of what it did was just, as you noted, updated names.
Corrections that are either errors, placement of tables in obscure locations, like, just like the fine tuning of the different chapters.
Okay.
Or references to things that had moved or don't exist anymore. And so this is also one, we're working with development services as they identify these things. We have a mechanism to address them.
So define a rural theme.
That might be more substantive.
Okay, and that's it. The last one was the cannabis code, but I think I understand that one, so. Awesome, thank you, I appreciate that.
So I think that was to help with Commissioner Claus's ranking. So we'll give her just a minute to finish that process.
While we're tabulating her ranking, I will run through the comp plan. And so we did have quite a few ties. And so there is a little bit of flexibility to potentially shift some things around based on the rankings. But the first one came in at BLQ, we didn't really have a runner up, it came in as the second place. So just naturally, we put that as the first one. Thurston 2045.
But this is Grand Mountain West.
So it's the BLQ and Womoski.
And Womoski.
Yep. And then so then Ag and Thurston 2045 were both tied at third place. Fire Holdings came in at fourth place. Capital Improvement Program and then Swally SubArea Plan were tied for fifth. And then the Martin Way, the Black Lake Quarry, and then the Jackson Grand Mountain East all came in at sixth place.
Right.
So a lot of ties.
I have a question. So how, so we're taking our votes and you're tabulating them, put them up there. How does the public know where their elected officials stand on each one of these issues?
So that's, that was the logic, the last time we did this, of everybody saying their scores out loud. You'd asked that question last time.
Yeah.
And that's why we did that, that way last time. So you could, so commissioners could get on the record with their specific ranking on their.
I'm very much not ashamed of any of my votes, so I, I think this looks.
Did you put all ones again?
No. I put a lot of twelves.
A lot of fives.
Some sixes. But I think the public deserves to know where their elected officials stand on all this stuff.
Do we have the other one tabulated by chance?
The development code, yes. And we do have them all in a table, so we can either.
Imagine those are all public record.
Yep.
So they're.
We'll give the sheets back to the commissioners and we'll let them say their scores. If that's, to the chair.
I, I think that we're working for the public. That's where I'm at.
At the will of the board.
Why would we not want to? We're all proud of our position, I'm sure.
Can't see it.
I can't see it.
Okay, so this is the starting place for the conversation.
So the first two were tied at fourth place. That will be the SMP and the Lacey UGA. The LRA and Tomwater UGA both came in sixth place, but.
Can you, the ones that tie, can you do like a little carrot off to the right and say where they, please? Thank you.
So nothing came in at first place?
No, it's nothing.
Huh.
Yeah.
I don't know how this is all going to work, to be honest with you.
I don't know how that.
I think it's, we don't need to, this is an exercise. Well, this is a nice top.
If it's got the highest score or the lowest score.
It's going to work the same way it's worked the last five years.
Then it would be tied for first.
Usually we debate it out.
We're going to do that as soon as we get preliminary rank. We had a question whether to. I was going to say discuss it and then vote and then, but we haven't set up to do the vote and then discuss, so it doesn't really matter.
We didn't reassign.
Oh yeah, no, that.
If nothing be in the first place.
There were, there was enough variability in how everyone ranked things.
Okay, we forgot to organize it. So, starting back out again, SMP and Lacey UGA were both in fourth place, but those were the two top runners. Forestland Conversions came in in a clear fifth. The LRA and the Tomwater UGA and the Olympia UGA all came in at six.
A score of six.
Six, yep. Cannabis was seven. Permit review and new uses was coming in at eight.
You're going to put those numbers of where it came in on each one of those two?
And this is just an average of the score, not necessarily the placing. It had the lowest average.
Code clarifications and the CIPA review. A minute. So this is the order of the projects.
What happened to, there's a couple not listed there.
Oh, so these actually had just a clear, they were next in line. They didn't have any ties with any other.
What about TDR and cannabis?
These were the averages, but this is the overall order of the projects as they came through.
Could you do the same with the comp plan with little carrots? If that helps? I don't know, does that help?
It hurts my brain.
Yeah.
Ashley, I want to show the Attorney Manager why we're getting this.
I don't, I don't, I think I know what they're doing.
Disinformation.
I just thought like, if one's a clear front runner.
Yeah.
And not tied, that might be more relevant. I already did the same thing, put the little ties together. I don't have one of those magic pads. So that's, I'm not saying that that's. Flawing the magic pad. No, I'm saying that by, by saying what the number is, like, that doesn't, that's helping us, that's just confusing everything. Average number is irrelevant. It's the conglomerate. So we don't need to know.
I'm going to, I want to ask a question, is that okay? Can I do that? We're in a question mode, right?
Most of the commissioners ranked one through nine, but not all commissioners did that. And so that changes the way that we do the tallying. So that's the conversation that we can have about, this is a good starting place and now we can have that next level.
I'm just going to pick a real, a real simple one. The other day, we talked about Martin Way. I take it that's a, is that that property that is listed in two different zoning?
Correct.
And so that ends up, and that, to me, that's an economic development issue. So that ends up at a pretty low priority here. But to me, it seems like it's almost like a no brainer for pretty simple to adjust that. You know, it doesn't look like it's going to take much work, we just scratch out that line and, and either put it this zoning or that zoning. So I'm just curious, is that right? Is that a pretty simple one?
This is a conversation to direct to your seatmates.
Well, I need to find out from Andrew, he's the one who knows what's going on here.
And as we.
The rest of us don't really know.
You got it right in terms of what the topic is.
What they showed us yesterday, or not yesterday, the other day, was that there's capacity within staff time to accomplish all those. And I, you know, like I was joking earlier, they're not going to just sit there, you know, with a piece of paper and like, we got to wait for number one, you know, to go to number two. I would imagine that, you know, they know when to call an audible and be like, hey, this, this number nine item, we can check it off real quick. Right? I mean, that's, there's got to be some.
I guess what I'm asking is.
They all go concurrently.
Based on what has just been said, what kind of work does it take to change a zoning line? How stupid the government was to put it in two zoning is an amazement to me. And I would think that it's the government's fault to fix that for a citizen. Not, not the citizens, the citizens shouldn't have to pay a nickel to get something that dumb fixed. So I'm just curious, what does it take to fix it? We're hearing about, do we have enough staff to do a job? What's it take?
So first thing, unclear how that initially got split zoned in the first place. It could have been at the request of the property owner, so we don't have the history on that. Second, that's exactly what this exercise is for, is to ensure that we've got all the pieces to make sure that we remedy that for the applicant if it is possible. And that's why we need to have the direction from the board to work on it. We don't know yet because we haven't explored it.
You don't have any idea what it's going to take to fix it.
It says in the binder, there's a staff, there's a staff resource.
I know, but that's a bunch of gobbledygook.
A bunch of gobbledygook to say.
A bunch of bureaucratic words is what it amounts to. And I'm just looking for an answer in public, so the public can hear.
Point two five FTE or less, it's right there. You've been provided that information?
Well, I'd say less. It'd be way less. I'd fix that in five minutes if it was allowed, if I was allowed to do that.
So you're making, you're making an argument, there's a lot of criteria by which we make decisions on this. You're making an argument, and I get it, for doing something that's simple upfront, even though it might be, I, for example, highly prioritize the criteria of stuff that's newer versus older. Like if we've already, if we've already invested a lot, I want to get it done. I never heard of Martin Way until two days ago, so that was never, ever, ever going to be my number one priority, no matter how stupid it was. Because there's a whole bunch of stuff out there that we've been working on for years. So that's my criteria. You have every right to argue for your criteria, but it's just, you know, but we got to figure that out together.
So let's keep it civil and we'll argue it.
So, I think staff had.
I just had a, so if we look at the sheet with the green bars, there, or I think it was handed out, no. So these are the steps of any rezone or land use amendment, regardless of how simple it might be. We have to go through our planning commission process, we have to go through our environmental review, and we have to go through the board. So those are steps defined by state law, regardless of the content of that application is. So I just want to highlight that that's really what, you know, staff, staff time will be spent on is making sure that we follow all, all those required processes.
All due process. Commissioner Ford, you're?
I, you know, I'm looking at the comp plan one, I, I think it looks fair. The only thing that I would want to talk about is adding number 10 back because it's such a low hanging fruit. It's such a small staff thing. Number 10 would be the Tanao UGA. It's on, it's on the holding block, but I would definitely like to see it on the let's move forward block. And it is a.
So you would add it as a number 10 priority?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll give you a second vote on that, I guess. I, I mean, how are we with staff? Like, is that?
We'll, we'll work on what we can in the order that it's provided and if something comes off.
I'm ready to jump in there too. I, I want to boost it along, get some thing done here.
And historically, just to.
I didn't say I'm against it.
And just to bolster that, in the past, when we have completed a topic, when the board or the planning commission has gone through all of the work on a topic and a topic has come off, we have been able to move down the ranking. So it would be beneficial for it to be on the docket if we have that opportunity.
I'm fine with that. Okay. Everybody agrees on that. I'm open for the target, it just scares me.
Well, then, I mean, if I get to make an argument, I want to argue for every economic development position in here today. Because here in the last couple of days, we've been talking about how our revenue picture isn't so good. Well, you know why it isn't so good? Because we don't have any retail outlet in this county. That's why it's not good.
The number one economic development item from, that I've been hearing about since I was a candidate in 2018 is the Lacey joint code update, which is why I have put it number one or number two for the last five years. You guys had it down like languishing at the bottom when I joined this board. And now it's, it's still, looks like it's still up there high, number two. And that is my, that is my agreeing with you and supporting what you're saying. Because I'm hearing, you know, I constantly hear from Lacey, that's our fast growing area, that's where all the economic development is happening, it's where we have a lot of things get delayed for no good reason because the joint codes are so out of date. And if we can get those things worked out. And if we can get those things worked out, things will go a lot faster and smoother.
The only reason I wouldn't put it number one is because, when that get annexed, when that gets annexed eventually, which will be pretty darn soon, then all that revenue goes to the city of Lacey. We don't get any at the county. The Growth Management Act was never followed up by the state to create the same type of revenue stream that the municipalities have. It's not our fault, it's the state sitting on their hands on that deal. So we need to get every opportunity where we can increase retail sales tax coming in.
It's true, but we have, we have the Growth Management Act, and we have to deal with it, and with all, you know, rising tide lifts all boats kinda thing. I mean, when, when there's economic development happening in Lacey's UGA, even if it turns, there's housing that comes along with that and all sorts of, you know, over. The EDC can tell us how, you know, it, these investments create ripple effects in the, in the, in the regional economy, so I think it's still important.
Sure.
So, back to the board, in terms of the way that they're set up. Uh, any, I mean, this appears to reflect the conversations that have been had over the past many weeks and months. Do commissioners have anything that they'd like to adjust or change?
Oh yeah, I want bar holdings right up on top.
And so that's a conversation to have with your fellow commissioners.
Okay.
Of course. So what's before it? It's the ag?
Grant mound, comp plan, and ag.
I mean.
I mean, we have to get the comp plan done, like, that's, like, that's, there's no ifs or buts about it, we have to get it done. And then, I feel like the, this wasn't my scoring, but I, you know, I guess I'll, I'll argue for kind of what's been done by everyone. The BLQ, I can see why it's so high up, it's because it's been pending for ever. Um, and, you know, I, I can see why, you know, that one needs to go, uh.
That's economic development oriented as well.
Yeah, and then the ag policies, I mean, we're, that's at the board level, it shows here, right?
And, and it's in response to an appeal.
So, um, I feel like we'll get through with that one, so, I, I mean.
I would say it is on top.
I think it is on top, yeah, too.
Cause the, the things above it, the thirst twenty forty-five, that doesn't matter where that sits there. It's gonna get done.
Well, I think.
And then, and then the ag policies and program, it's done. It's, it's, it's ready to be checked off, so, it's basically, bar holdings is basically number two. I mean, really, if you look at the workflow.
That'd be number one.
You wanna replace it with the BLQ and Wilmowski?
No, like, that's just yet. That whole thing, we could put it up there, and they have offered that if we don't have the staff to do it, they'd step forward and help do it. I've been advocating for that for years. We should never hold up a good program and project because we say we don't have the staff. They oughta, we oughta contract that out at their expense.
The way those are done, it, the way those are ranked right there, you're getting what you're asking for. Really, I mean, it is that.
It's not going through on jet speed yet.
Uh, it, it is.
This is the speed it can go. It's gotta go through the public process to stand in the end.
And we do have staff assigned to that, and we've been working with them. The, the application changed, so in terms of it moving faster, we needed to make sure that the board docketed the new application that included the UGA swap.
You probably will never work fast enough for me.
I'll just say that, for me, uh, the comp plan is pretty close to my rankings, so I'm fine. The development code is pretty different than my rankings, but I'm not gonna, I mean, I'm perfectly willing to accept the, the growth, the board's composite rankings.
Oh, the development code, okay, let me see.
So, I, I'm good with what we have, if that, unless.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yep.
Um, I'm just curious, if it's on the docket, can, and we've acknowledged that we have roughly enough staff to do it, can the board reasonably expect all these things to be finished this year? Two years. Two years.
Two-year cycle.
So, two years from now, they can expect that they will be taking a final vote on all of these things?
In terms of our process, yes, but in terms of what community input we receive, that may, the board may ask for more time to consider items, we can't answer that question. But in terms of process.
Planning commission.
Correct.
I would say significant progress, I mean, staff assigned and significant progress. Whether that's coming back to the board with a briefing sent, you know, helping us scope it, or, but that there will be conversations and, on all of these items and a public process started.
And that was the improvement in the efficiency that you saw, the little ranking up with the staff and resources, to meet just that question, so.
Which makes this.
Just trying to.
Which makes this whole exercise a lot less significant than it's been in prior years.
That's, that's a good point.
We docketed way more than we had staffing resources for.
Right.
We've never been in this position where you guys were able to come to us and say, we can, we think we can get everything you put up there.
Reasonable, significant progress on the entire list, within two years.
Yeah, no, and I, I get, I just wanted to give major props to the staff because last year, the amount of staff was, just, items that came in from the board to like, complete was absolutely incredible, and it was like this basically churning machine. And it was, I know a big part of that lift was, so, there would be staff availability for the comp plan, and just all that planning that went into it. Again, it, it just was a big, heavy lifting from staff, getting through that to the planning commission, getting that to the board. Um, and I think this is a reflection of kind of all that work, where, you know, it's, it's really staff's work, that, the reason why we're here. Um, and so we are working on, I think, getting these items through in a timely manner that hasn't happened before. And it's really, I just wanna, you know, we don't hear a lot of positive feedback, but I really wanna highlight that because, you know, we've never been in this situation before, and it just goes to highlight the work that is being done by staff to really get us into that two-year timeline.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that Commissioner Klaus had her hand up.
Um, my question was answered. It was basically just clarification on the process, um, so, yeah, you guys already answered that.
And I think it will, this will still be a heavy lift, so make no mistake, this is still a lot. Especially as, you know, we've talked about other jurisdictions during their comprehensive planning year, when they started off, they don't accept site-specific rezones and other items, uh, so they can focus on that. We still do, and so we have a big, uh, docket. The planning commission has been prepared to receive a lot of this information, but they're gonna be working hard, and you're gonna see a lot of stuff coming to you. So, this is still a big lift, but we're back on track to where we can, um, I think, considering, uh, fully that we can staff it and resource it. So it is a big deal. Thank you for your support.
On that topic of staff, so, if we had more staff, would that solve the problem? Would that expedite the whole process?
So I go back to the initial statement that I make at the beginning of each one of these. You have three resource constraints. You have the staff resource, and that's one resource constraint that we've just addressed. You have the planning commission, the hours in a day, the time that they can reasonably review, your volunteers reveal all this information. And then you have the board constraints, and so that public process, back to this sheet of paper, those three constraints are really what determines whether or not we can keep things moving through. You can't always just throw more staff, because then you gotta bottleneck at the planning commission. That's really, we gotta, we have to balance all of that. And that, I think, all of those things have been put forward to you from the staff currently. So this is still a heavy lift, but I wouldn't say you could just throw more CPAD staff at an issue and things would go faster. We are looking at ways, and that will be the next conversation that we have. How are we, uh, going forward with using external consultants, getting studies, all of the things that we were trying to accomplish to create efficiency? So we are using outside work when we can and where we can.
So part of the planning to get to two years from now is, um, kinda mapping out when things go to the planning commission, because you can only load so much in each planning commission meeting.
That's right.
And we basically have them booked for, with comp plan. We've got time set aside for comp plan at every meeting through the end of the year, and then we're trying to slot in other projects where we think they have an extra thirty to forty-five minutes on their agenda.
So does the board's prioritization feed into when you would take it to the planning commission?
That's right, that's exactly right.
Okay.
Commissioner, here.
I, I guess I wanna go back to the development code because I, uh, just seen the, the ranking. Um, so, the forest land conversions, I, I got, that's at BOCC level, and that's basically, we're going to be having more discussion on it, and seeing where we go from there. I guess I, I want to advocate a little bit more for the UGA updates. Um, and, you know, Tomwater and Olympia is kind of down there, and I feel like that's, that's such an important part of our development code is really, and that's been what we've been saying, right? Aligning ourselves with kind of our jurisdictional partners and just having it way down there, I, you know, I, I kind of.
I would make the same argument I just made to Commissioner Edwards, though. If you look at the rankings one through six, forest land conversions is done, according to this, so you don't count that.
I am not.
And then the LRA thing, you know, it's low, low staff time, it's kind of, you know, unsure exactly what it is. So, maybe, I mean, you can kinda un, discount those two, and it, it puts the UGA ones at number two, three, and four, essentially.
Well, there's also the, the cannabis-related ones, and not saying that that's not important, but.
Cannabis is underneath.
No.
Underneath the UGA.
Did I change?
It's number seven over there.
Tomwater and Olympia are five and six.
Okay.
So basically the.
Sorry, I apologize, I'm looking at an old picture.
Yeah, the UGA, the UGA.
It could jump over LRA.
Basically the top priorities, cause.
No, never mind, strike that comment, I was looking at the previous picture before it got restructured.
You did that just so I'd feel good on my.
So, we have, right now, we have one thumbs up from Commissioner Minzer on both the development and comp. We have a question from Commissioner Klaus, now with two thumbs up on development and comp.
Yeah, so, looking at, once you said that it will impact the timeline for getting things to the planning commission, I started looking at the sheet, and, which one is it? The capital improvement program has not been to the planning commission, and that one is right under bar holdings, but the CIP is legally required, we have to do that. So shouldn't we bump that up since, shouldn't the planning commission talk about that sooner, or?
I, I, I'm gonna jump in. The CPI has a set timeline, it's gonna go when it needs to go.
Okay.
No matter where you put it on this list, or if you leave it off this list, we will be doing the CPI.
I did the opposite of Commissioner Edwards, we're the same.
Okay.
Cause it was like, that's not gonna, you know, there's nothing we can do about that.
I think we ended up the same, I don't know.
Yeah, that's why I ranked them low.
I put them all low except shoreline, because we don't know when that's coming.
When you're, you're talking about resource constraints, and the big one being the planning commission, does King County only have one planning commission and they've got the same resource restraints? Or can you have two planning commissions?
That's a good question.
That is a kind of.
Research that topic.
Okay.
Maybe one do comp and one do development code, or something like that.
And then you've got the third resource constraint, which is you, board of county commissioners, so.
Which we just increased the number of. We're way to work around the clock.
We have Saturday sessions just for this.
Yes.
As long as there's an attorney and it's televised.
I know, Ashley and Andrew are cringing right now.
Travis is here. If anybody's got a legal question, Travis is here.
We have two thumbs up on both dockets, now we have three.
My legal question for Travis is, can you have two?
Oh, on both of us. Oh, then we're ready to go, oh.
That's what we have so far, we have three thumbs up.
Yeah, and you don't always get what you want, right? Sometimes it's a compromise. Is that what I'm hearing? So I'm stuck with a compromise.
Definitely, development code's definitely not anywhere near my ranking.
Does anybody wanna arm wrestle or have a duel?
I will.
Wants to arm wrestle. Yes!
You gotta take her, you gotta take her.
I mean, the Lacey, Tomwater, Olympia, those development codes, they're a natural progression, this is an iterative process. They were in the other column last year, basically under the comp plan, of doing those, those joint plans, and then they have to progress here. So it's, it's a natural, and you can't implement it without taking this step.
So I think I saw a thumbs up on the dockets from Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Klaus?
I think so, it sounds like it doesn't matter, it sounds like it's all gonna get done.
We're gonna do our very best.
Significant progress.
That has been asked in the past, but, but.
Things happen.
Yeah.
So the priorities do matter. And it affects the schedule with the planning.
Yeah, but there's certain ones where it's like, it doesn't really matter where they're at, cause that's, it's gonna get done anyways. So it's kind of confusing to know, like, I feel like I should just give a thumbs up because the ones I have questions about are on a separate timeline.
That's true.
Depending on external factors, so.
The ones that didn't make it was a big decision the other day.
Yeah.
That was a big decision.
Which one?
The ones, you know, if they made it.
Yeah.
Or if they were, like, that was the big decision point the other day.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
So we just received the fourth, or excuse me, the fifth thumbs up from Commissioner Klaus. Any other further discussion? If not, we'll move forward with this.
Good job.
Wow, that was.
Yeah, yay!
I still wanna arm wrestle with Commissioner Edwards.
I wanna see.
So this, so this information.
I might change that, go to the table.
It's cool as well.
I hate losing arm wrestling to him, yeah.
Oh yeah, let's do it, let's do it.
Are you gonna set it up?
Public meeting, over there.
So, we will put this information into an AIS and present it back to the board. So the question to the board is, when would you like to see this? How soon? Is there a timing issue?
Tomorrow. For what?
Uh, ha, ha, so, so, it would be, if you can have it ready, the next feasible meeting is the third Tuesday in April.
We have to vote, is what you're saying?
So, yeah.
Yeah, you have to actually adopt the docket.
We, we can be ready for either the first or the third.
The, the, the review of the first has already happened, so the next one would be on the.
April sixteenth.
I think, yeah, that sounds right.
And then that comes for the board to vote?
First meeting, I mean, I, what is, can I ask, like, this is for me a review right here, right?
So you wanna walk it on?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've done a review.
It's your choice, you can walk things onto your own agenda. As staff, we've been instructed to not do that, so, uh, I try to avoid. And, but if you don't wanna wait two weeks, we'll get it right on.
Why not? Doesn't it matter to you guys?
Get her done. We're, we could prepare.
Well, next week is the second.
Easy to do the AIS.
I don't know if it matters, is the question.
They, they will take this, put it on a AIS so that the board can adopt the dockets. Uh, two, right, one for comp and one for development.
Wait a few meetings, is that, is there like a couple-touch policy, or?
If you think about it, yesterday, you reviewed your agenda for April second. Once you go through the first review, by board direction, we resist adding things and walking them on.
Okay.
Um, so, if, if it's important to you, you, of course, can direct us to add something, and we will do that.
The issue is to make sure that there's enough public process and there's no surprises.
Process, that you all have time to think about all the things that are on your, you're about to take a vote on.
An ar, argument for that is there's been quite a bit of public.
You've made a, you've made a decision.
This isn't a new thing, it's been touched multiple times, it's had month of public comment.
It's not some non-emergency reclass that's being thrown on.
There you go. Um, alright, then, then, uh, is Amy behind me?
No, she's not.
So, I'll let, just get ahold of Amy, put, get in the system, contact Amy, and tell her that you've got a green light to walk it on for next week.
And so the board will see two motions to accept the comprehensive plan docket and the development code docket at your April second meeting.
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Wait, there's more.
Don't go any too deep, I wanna see your number two.
I'd hate to lose.
Well, you're gonna hate to lose.
Oh, no, they're not. No, they're not.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm the old guy, remember? Remember? I wouldn't do it. He's got that old guy strength.
A little stronger than I thought it would. I guess I'll have to start working out, and.
That's awesome.
You got a picture of it?
Okay.
Send it to me.
Me too.
Oh, boy.
That will go in our Hall of Fame pictures.
And I can, uh, share the screen with the PowerPoint, and then just give you the mouse if you wanna.
Are we doing the, what else, the overview? Yes, that's great.
Next is, uh, CPAD code compliance overview.
Do we need to, we don't need to wait until?
No, we're waiting, no.
Okay, no, no.
Oh, man.
Let's make sure Brett is on his way here.
Oh, do we need to wait for more?
Uh, Brett, Bruce is on his way as well, but.
Where's our P I O? We gotta get this on the.
Commissioners like exercising civility.
Decision-making process.
Take innovative approaches to.
Nay, nay.
There was a whole conversation about somebody bringing in chocolates.
I hope my wrist physical therapist doesn't watch that video.
Yeah, you're sending that straight to Ellen I.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was not an on-the-job injury.
Don't worry. Ellen I would say that she has a pre-existing.
Or scroll.
I was in a bar once where two people did a arm wrestle and we were just, and you heard, it sounded like spaghetti snapping.
Oh.
Guy was laid out, ambulance came, like.
It broke his arm.
Broke his arm. It's just like, ever since then, I've been too scared to arm wrestle anyone.
Come on, Tyler. No, I'm kidding. I will not.
I'll challenge you to a crossword puzzle.
All right.
Yep, we're ready when you are.
Okay, so topic number three this morning is community planning and economic development code compliance overview discussion. And we've got team members here from CPED, so we'll just turn it over to Josh Cummings.
Great, thank you. Joshua Cummings, Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. This topic in our Development Services Division of CPED is one that is important as we review applications that come in through the Building Development Center. Those applications are then routed to our land use reviewers and then our building department reviews the applications. A building is built, land is used, but sometimes in that process, land is used in a way that violates code and ordinance. And CPED, Thurston County CPED is complete, is a complaint-driven organization. So when we hear about a problem, we go out and investigate and we see if the rules are being followed as they are written within code and ordinance. And that is our code compliance. I will say, before my time here, the Board of County Commissioners had reviewed that code compliance was scattered throughout multiple parts of our code. And it was inconsistent in the way that it was being applied throughout the different land use and building codes that we implement. And so what the board at that time did was they tasked the staff at the time to review all the code compliance sections that were scattered throughout the code and to figure out a way to bring them all together into one title chapter and to focus on what was called cooperative compliance. So that we, as the people that are looking to see if the rules were followed, engage with the property owner in a way that enacts due process, that is courteous, that is kind, that is clear and concise, and that gives that property owner time to remedy whatever complaint has been provided, to see if it was a valid complaint and then to remedy if it was. And so that's, the world that we live in now was voted upon by the board to enact Title 26, and that's our code compliance title. And that title is where all of this information stems from, from the Board of County Commissioners for our time that made it clear that we are to engage in cooperative compliance with our community under Title 26 and to assist them in a process to come into compliance and to not be a heavy hand and a heavy hammer, but to work cooperatively.
Ever. I mean, there's gotta be a point when you become a hammer.
And that will be part of the conversation, that Title 26 does include options for going to court, legal actions, remedies of all of those natures. So all of the code compliance does have hammers in it, but it is to try to not get to that point if we can. And we have enacted those items as well on projects that did not engage in cooperative compliance. So to answer your question straight up, yes, we have and we do, but it's not the first step.
On that topic, just because we've got some new commissioners here, we've had cases that have lingered for 20 years before they were solved, so. And those are problem cases, not somebody that added a bedroom on a house or expanded a wall that affected absolutely nobody. Those seem to get resolved pretty quick when it comes right down to it because the citizen has some money and we seem to lean on people with money. The deadbeats that are out there causing all kinds of community aggravation, whether it's meth labs, disassembling stolen cars, whatever it might be, those are the ones that linger on and on and on. I'd like to see that get reversed. I really don't care if somebody adds a bedroom under their house. That's the least of my concern. If, if grandma wants to move in, for whatever reason, her economic situation changed, you're gonna expand the wall out, that oughta be up to the landowner. I don't really care about that. But when somebody's got a meth lab percolating or they're doing all kinds of other illegal activity, that is where our priorities should be. That's my position.
Yeah, and this, this really was an opportunity today to kind of provide that level-set understanding of Title 26 and knowing that it, it's always a challenge. There's always a, a push and pull when it comes to compliance. We do have a, a system that's focusing on voluntary compliance. And it's always balanced with due process and due process is not.
And let me just expand on that.
Criminal violations are different than civil.
Front page of the PowerPoint.
It's, uh, the other piece of my concern would be environmental. I got somebody out there that's just got a hole dug and they're, that's where their septic is going and the creek is, you know, running along here at 10 feet away, which I have personally turned into the county when I was a lawman, and it seemed like it never, ever got fixed. Nobody here was around in those days because I've been around forever. But it's just an aggravation to me to see flagrant, serious violations go un-bothered, so to speak, without any correction. And the mother-in-law room or something, a sunroom gets converted to a bedroom. We drag them through a, you know, through a knothole backwards 27 times.
Before I go.
No, I was just gonna say, and Sandy and team have created, I think, a very effective presentation.
I would agree. Yeah, I was gonna say.
We should watch the presentation.
Do we have something before we fit like?
Yeah.
Because I have questions, but I wanna save them for the end.
I, I just kinda wanna, in part, respond to Commissioner Edwards, right? Because I think the big piece that comments that I've, it's from neighbors, right, who are the ones calling because their neighbor is adding an additional room to their house because grandma's moving in and they're not happy about it. And they're making sure that they're calling CPED and then it becomes a situation where CPED gets stuck in between neighbor battles and that's a lot of the calls that happen is because someone's not happy that this person is adding this or someone else moves in to that house and I don't like them. I used to like the other person, but I don't like them anymore, so I'm gonna call code compliance and, and ding them for things that the previous owner used to do, right? And so there's, there's a lot of intricacies that go into code compliance that it's not, it's not just black and white. There's a lot of gray into it as well.
And I, I guess just as a follow-up to that, I'm not questioning those calls at all. I never get those kind of calls. All my calls are meth labs, junkyards, problem stuff that's a real problem. And maybe they don't call me because they know I don't care about it. I've made it very public that I wanna prioritize the problems. So they don't bug me about it. They probably think they got an easy touch.
So I may, I may just add, as we're getting into this presentation, appreciate the very long history that Commissioner Edwards has with the county. And there were many projects that languished for 20 and 30 years. And over the past five or six years, since Title 26 has been in place and I've been the director, we have taken the lessons learned from those previous decades and implemented many processes that have not allowed for that languishing to affect. You, as the board, have created the mitigation fund for abatement. You have created process that has led directly to abatement of multiple properties. And that's what this presentation is about, is about the success over the past five years that we've had in not allowing for what Commissioner Edwards talked about and how we can continue to move forward. And so in the spirit of moving forward, may we begin the presentation?
Yep, let's hold our questions till you guys are done. We've got 45 minutes.
Great. So we have Brett Burris, the manager of Development Services. Next to him is Sandy Norton, our supervisor for code compliance, and then Jason Morgan on the compliance team. And I'll kick it over to Brett or Sandy.
Yeah.
Sandy will lead us.
Perfect. First of all, I'd just like to thank you so much for expressing interest and wanting to learn more about what CPED compliance does. So I'm really excited about this presentation today. Um, I would like to reintroduce the compliance team. Um, this is Jason Morgan. Jason Morgan has been with CPED compliance for about three years now. Um, and then there's myself. Um, I've been with compliance about eight months, but 31 years with Thurston County. Um, so this is it. This is the CPED, CPED compliance team. We're the team working hard for you while covering over seven, our 700 square miles of Thurston County.
How many more people are in your team?
We have one more F T E. Uh, that position is being field April 1 and that will be in the presentation.
So two field staff and one supervisor.
Okay. We don't have Craig anymore?
Craig is a planner. He's our senior planner. He got a promotion.
Congratulations, Craig.
Okay, so.
So that's important though. Two field staff for 700 square miles.
That's insane.
722.5. 722.5.
So CPED values are transparency, consistency, and accountability. Um, I'm sure you've heard that more than once. Transparency is we are transparent, transparent about our processes and the actions that we take. Consistency means that we treat everyone the same while following the compliance action steps outlined in Title 26. And accountability means that we hold ourselves accountable for the actions that we take. CPED mission is service to the community.
And I'll jump in on the service to the community for just a minute. As Commissioner Mejia relayed, we do as CPED get put in the middle of neighbor situations on a regular basis. And one of our other values is respect for democracy and recognizing that we are a nation of codes and ordinances and laws and regulations. And as that, we sometimes are kind of the referee in a civil society. And so the service that we provide to the community in this code compliance is to take the energy down a notch, to have a conversation about what is allowed and if there's something that isn't, something that's allowed that shouldn't be, to bring that forward to the Board of County Commissioners. And so this service is really that on-the-ground civil service to our community and ensuring that we maintain that perspective of public service and as a nation of laws. So that's a big one and I would never wanna miss an opportunity to talk about the mission of your great public service.
So CPED Development Services Division's the Building Development Center, which is referred to as the B D C. That is the heartbeat of CPED. Um, first point of contact where citizens or community members go when they wanna learn more about developing their property or obtaining permits to develop their property. Um, the Building Development Center, how I like to describe it, intakes permit applications. They educate the public on the permitting process and they issue permits. Um, planning reviews development proposals and conducts site visits to ensure alignment with development codes and ordinances. For an example, an example of this is someone who's wanting to build a shop on a five-acre parcel with a wetland on the property. Planning Services is gonna review that site plan, make sure they're complying with development regulations, meeting property setbacks, not exceeding impervious area, um, and there's no impact to the critical area or its associated buffer. Building reviews construction plans to ensure alignment with the building codes. And basically, those are the drawings that are submitted um, showing how the structure is going to be built to make sure that it's safe and it aligns with the residential building code. Inspections, inspectors conduct buildings inspections throughout the phase of construction to ensure that the structure is being built pursuant to the approved construction plans and it's being placed in the location that was approved on the site plan. Compliance, we respond to the complaints about properties which may not be in alignment with these codes. So Josh kind of already elaborated on this just a little bit. CPED compliance, code enforcement, uh, was, is regulated under Title 26. This was adopted in 2016. Prior to this adoption, code enforcement was embedded or incorporated into various codes and ordinances such as the zoning code and the critical area ordinance. Um, with the adoption of Title 26, code enforcement went from strict code compliance to cooperative compliance. Um, CPED compliance enforces Titles 26 as it relates to building codes, land use codes, and portions of the Public Works Code, which is Title 13 and 15. Um, we prioritize complaints based on public health and safety and impacts to the environment, meaning living in an R V complaint is going to take priority over a junk vehicle complaint. We are complaint-driven and attempt to achieve compliance through cooperative compliance. And cooperative compliance is accomplished through a voluntary compliance agreement when a violation cannot be remedied within a 30-day time period. Okay, so compliance action steps. There are six steps of compliance that are outlined in Title 26. Receiving the complaint is what initiates code enforcement. Once a complaint is received, to give you an idea of what we do, we mail out a contact letter to the property owner, just asking them to contact us so we can talk about the complaint. Step three is to investigate the complaint. This investigation may occur during step two. We will research the property. That's looking at property history, ownership, um, any compliance history that may be associated with that parcel. We also conduct a site visit to determine if a violation exists. The site visit piece can be tricky. Um, sometimes we're able to access the site, sometimes we're not due to locked gates um, or no trespassing signs, um, which would prohibit us access to the property. So following curtilage, we're only able to view what we can see while walking from the vehicle to the home, back to the vehicle, or view what we can see from the adjacent roadway or right-of-way. Um, and on occasion, we're able to obtain permission from the adjacent property owner to access their property to be able to view what we need to view.
Sandy, explain curtilage, please.
Curtilage is a protection of privacy for the homeowner. Um, the homeowner has a level of privacy that they can maintain and that consists of the primary residence and its surrounding area. Um, with that said, we're not able to roam about the property when we access a piece of property. Um, we cannot look over fences or peek through fences or walk through gates. We are limited on what we can do to comply with curtilage.
Eric brought up drone a couple weeks ago. Or is that like something you're able to operate from a roadway or?
And so that will be one of the legal questions that we'll hit. So maybe let's put a pin in that one and keep going because we have that for sure as a topic.
So when we are able to access a piece of property, if the violation is in process, we will issue a stop-work notice onsite. The next step is a notice of violation. Um, this document, this letter is, is, is written and sent out once we're able to determine that a violation exists. Um, the notice identifies what the violation is and it provides a path forward for that property owner. They have 30 days to comply, into compliance. Um, they also have an opportunity to appeal that notice of violation. Any appeals associated with that are administrative appeals and those are appealed to the hearing examiner for Thurston County. This is also an opportunity for CPED compliance to work toward cooperative compliance through a voluntary compliance agreement. Um, step five is a civil penalty notice. Um, this is only issued when other methods of compliance have been ineffective. Penalties are, they begin to be assessed seven days after the notice is issued and then they're assessed for a maximum of 30 days per violation. There is an opportunity for the property owner to appeal that notice as well. Um, and again, another opportunity for CPED compliance to work toward cooperative compliance through a voluntary compliance agreement. Step number six is referring the case to the prosecuting attorney's office. They work their magic. They seek a judgment on the final civil penalties. This is the process or the stage where there's a claim of lien, abatement, and condemnation, which is taking possession of the property. So although there are only six steps, each step takes time. This seems like a really quick process when you're talking about steps. But each step is very time-consuming and managing the timelines can be challenging when the volume of case, with the volume of cases that we currently have.
And I would say, just to put those two things together, Sandy relayed earlier that the priorities were life and safety and the environment. And so the timelines are in this, step six, steps one through six, that is the due process. When something comes to us that is a life, safety, or environment, that does get prioritized at the top to ensure that we're making sure that the community is safe and well-cared-for. Uh, and those timelines are in there, so that is that process in terms of our prioritization.
What does your caseload look like?
What does your caseload look like?
Uh, we'll be talking about that here shortly.
Sorry, go on.
That's coming up. So voluntary compliance agreement um, is a collaborative written commitment between the county and the property owner, um, which addresses correcting the impacts of the violation in a timely manner. Um, the voluntary compliance agreement is not a settlement agreement by any means. It's just to commit them to a timeline to fix the violation. Examples of voluntary compliance agreements that are currently in place. Um, as you look at those examples, some of these addresses you may be familiar with. And three of these four examples are cases that we are working closely with environmental health, um, compliance team on.
I'd say that's another big piece of the puzzle is, uh, with Title Twenty-Six and with the past few years, we have made sure that we've got a nice collaborative working relationship with the other two departments, Public Works and Public Health, ensuring that we're all coordinated as well as, and we'll probably get to it, coordinating with your executive aides. We have multiple opportunities to engage so that we're all on the same page moving forward. And we chose not to use names here, obviously, but these are examples, these VCA's, of that cooperative compliance working in terms of what are you doing with your property currently? And what can be done, uh, functionally to do what you want with your property within code and ordinance? So when we talked about, is there something we could potentially change that could allow for that use? That goes right to one of these, that is removing a split zone. So we're working through them with the VCA while they're also trying to find a more, uh, permanent remedy. And these are, I think, four good examples of how we do that process.
What about, you know, you mentioned, uh, environmental health, this all the way. So what about coordination with traditional law enforcement? A lot of these properties, there's like a comorbidity of criminal behavior as well as, you know, not caring about codes.
Yes, we do refer cases to the sheriff's office as well.
Do you ever, like, work, like, basically badge-to-badge, hip-to-hip, and like go and visit sites? You know, like, when they get a warrant, they can go in there and, uh, if it's safe, I would imagine you could go under their, in their, under their, you know, authority.
It's a, it's a good sport.
That is another legal question.
Yeah.
Honestly.
Well, let's give it that. That is a good one, because that's how we interact with the public. And so we'll have that as a good conversation topic.
Okay.
Okay, past major successes. I'm going to let, um, Brett, uh, Brett talk about the next few slides.
Oh, uh, so we had three successes in the past. Carolyn Beach was a, uh, a, a structure pictured here, uh, that was, uh, blight on the neighborhood. Uh, we worked with the property owner and they, uh, submitted a demolition permit to remedy that all on their own. So working with the code compliance process, uh, the property owner decided to demo it instead of repair it. The next one is Single Tree Estates, and that was collaboration with the homeowners association. We worked directly with them to, um, to work with the property owner, um, and help with the logistics associated with it. Uh, using the code compliance process, we got that removed and demoed. And then finally, there is the LP Brown. LP Brown, uh, was a duplex located near, uh, one of the elementary schools, LP Brown, um, that not only was abandoned but also had a fire. Uh, we, uh, collaborated with, uh, the Olympia School District, and we used condemnation in order to remedy and, uh, fix that project, or fix that, uh, blight. And in coordination with the Olympia School District, they are now the property owners of that, and they are going to use that for a public purpose, uh, as it relates to LP Brown.
So the after pictures would have been nice, too, because those are all cleaned up.
What are they going to use it for?
And that, all those, all those properties look nice and pristine. And so what I would say here, back to Commissioner Fornier's original question, these are the hammers. And so Carline Beach got to step five in the civil penalty notice, and the property owner said, okay, you're right, I can fix it. They took the opportunity to fix it instead of going to step six, instead of going to court.
How long did it take?
Took us, when we got the case, it took us about two and a half years. Uh, step six is an example of Single Tree Estates. They got through right around the abatement area of step six, and we developed a program where we looked for a partner in the community. Who was the complainant? Who was a potential partner? In this case, it was the Single Tree Estates Homeowners Association. And Commissioner Edwards, you get calls on these on a lot of occasions in terms of these types of properties. Robin Quartz, your executive aide, was, I think, integral in making sure that the partnership with the homeowners association was successful as well as the other aides. Uh, and with that, the property owner, after going through step six, and with partnership of the homeowners association, we were able to clean that property up. And then the final property, LP Brown, that was the most hammer that we've had to use, Commissioner Fornier, in terms of taking them all the way through the court process and then finding a way towards condemnation. And we don't do that very often. Out of all the cases that you'll hear, very seldom do we go all the way through the condemnation process. Uh, but this one, we had to. And in that condemnation process, we found a partner. Since this property was adjacent to the Olympia School District's LP Brown, we engaged with OSD, and they said, we will, uh, we've set up a mitigation fund through the Board of County Commissioners to condemn the property and then have the property, uh, come to us. And then, once we had the property in our ownership, uh, the Olympia School District provided us the value of the property back into our mitigation fund, and we transferred ownership of that property to OSD. And so it was cleaned up in the process. The property was transferred over to OSD. And that is a shining example. Those top three of how the hammer, as Commissioner Fornier puts it, in the voluntary compliance does work. And we have been using this. We do not, uh, rest on our laurels. We don't let properties languish for twenty years. We work at them very quickly if they're a life, safety issue, and especially if we have a partner. And that's how we do it. And that's essentially the successes where people may have a perspective of how this used to operate twenty years ago. That's not how we currently operate. We find a problem, we understand what the problem is, and we find a partner to achieve a solution. And that's what your code compliance does in those issues.
Did you get, did you get the money back on Single Tree Estates on, because we had to pay for the cleanup?
There's a lien on that property currently.
It's currently on the property, so we will get it back at some point.
Someday.
But as far as you know, the taxes are being paid and all that.
Correct. And, uh, I'll elaborate just a little bit. Condemnation is tricky. Uh, whenever a public agency or entity decides to condemn a property, it needs to be for public purpose. And that's where the partnership with Olympia School District was, uh, it was needed. Um, if we did not partner with them, we would own a piece of property. We might not be able to condemn it because we couldn't provide a public, public use for it.
And I do want to say that, that it's the prosecuting attorney's office, and I'm saying this because there are new commissioners here, have often been the bottleneck, if you will, on why all, like, Josh is referring to that twenty-year one. Well, that's a, a crazy example. Why would it ever take that long? But the prosecuting attorney's office has always been the bottleneck. And I've got forty years' experience, so I've been there with them, and I don't mind throwing them under the bus. Because, and then they've got their priorities that they have to deal with as well. So it isn't staff dragging their feet. I don't want to ever imply that. It's the process in total.
And I'd say thank you for that, but I'd also say, in our recent experience, the prosecuting attorney's office has been a strong partner in the legal process when we get to step five and six in the civil penalty notice and, uh, working through the condemnation process. So we're all learning together. We're building. We're getting better, and, uh, the PAO has been a positive partner.
And we, we've actually had situations where maybe the Veterans Association ended up owning a bill. There's one over on Carpenter, Union Mills, I think it is, where just a junkyard house, some, the guy died that got the loan from them. Trying to get these federal organizations to take responsibility or do something is an absolute nightmare.
Can be difficult. Okay, let's move to the next slide.
Well, actually, I just want to, uh, give recognition to the Board of County Commissioners. One of the past major successes was, uh, the establishment of an abatement fund.
That's right.
Uh, there was no opportunity to use, um, county finances and resources, uh, until that abatement fund was created. And that abatement fund not only helps us with code compliance, but it also gives an avenue of collection of those civil penalties where we didn't have that before. So thank you very much.
Okay, current resources. CPED compliance is funded with, uh, three FTEs. Uh, two compliance coordinator positions. One is filled, one is to be filled April one, and then the compliance supervisor position. Um, we cover seven hundred and twenty-two point five square miles of Thurston County. And to give you an example of our workload and our successes, um, we responded to nearly four thousand phone calls in two thousand twenty-three, um, responded to a little over eight thousand emails. We received two hundred and eighty-two complaints, issued fifty-five notice of violations, um, completed a hundred and sixty-six junk vehicle affidavits, and entered into two voluntary compliance agreements. Um, we were able to successfully close a hundred and eighty-eight cases in two thousand twenty-three, so that is a huge success for compliance.
So help me understand real quick, Sandy, the complaints, two hundred and eighty-two, not all of them turned out to be cases, or are they cases?
Not all of them are cases that move on to, not all of them were cases that were confirmed a violation.
Okay, but the one hundred and eighty-eight, there was a violation and that case was closed.
That is correct. And the hundred and eighty-eight is, is total number of cases, not just cases from two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. That's, that's awesome.
Okay, so complaint and violation data. Um, over the past five years, we've received over thirteen hundred complaints. Our top five complaint types are building violations, um, three hundred and fifty-two. Those are structures being built without permits. Those are bedrooms being added to homes without permits. Uh, those are, uh, change of uses, taking a garage or a shop and converting it into an accessory dwelling unit without benefit of a permit. Junk vehicles, two hundred and eighteen cases. Um, critical area ordinance, hundred and ninety-three cases. Those, um, violations consist of unpermitted activity within a wetland, within a shoreline, with any, um, within any type of critical area. Zoning violations, a hundred and eighty-one cases. Um, that's associated with, uh, an example is an event center and/or a food processing facility that's been, um, that's in operation without benefit of a land use permit. Um, and/or it could be even a structure that's built too close to a property boundary. Living-in recreational vehicles, a hundred and seventy-three cases. Um, other complaint types that are not listed here is our forest practice, which is, uh, logging of trees, grading and clearing, mobile or manufactured homes placed without benefit of a permit, um, commercial uses and/or structures, gravel mines and stormwater drainage. So our current workload, complaints currently sitting in our compliance email line are a hundred plus. They are prioritized. We get to them as, as soon as we can. Junk vehicle affidavit requests that are pending processing right now are a hundred and twenty-three plus. Phone calls pending responses are over nineteen at this point in time, and active violation cases that we currently have are a hundred and sixty-two. Opportunities for two thousand twenty-four, um, process, ongoing standardization, creating efficiency and consistency within CPED compliance. Organization is continued collaboration, um, between CPED divisions, other county departments, outside agencies, and community members. And then, um, consider additional staffing to effectively manage compliance cases. Tools, ongoing training, and then the new permit tracking system, which is scheduled, scheduled to go live sometime this year. So in conclusion, um, CPED compliance, we will continue to provide service to the community. We will continue to enforce Title Twenty-Six approved by the board in two thousand sixteen. We will continue to standardize our processes whenever we have an opportunity. We will continue to communicate and collaborate with internal and external staff and agencies.
And so what we heard from the commissioners was, um, you wanted to know what was the overarching caseload? And what are the standard, the normal violations? And we went through that. You also wanted to know what were some of the constrictions? And so we wanted to leave space for that conversation to be had. And I think that there was, on the table from the commissioners, a conversation about using drones or selfie sticks to, uh, near the curtilage line. And I think that there was another question. Help me remind me on that one. Maybe it wasn't a question so much as, thank you, Commissioner Fornier, for scheduling a ride-along coming up here pretty soon. Looking forward to getting you on the ground and seeing that in person. Oh, and we are not law enforcement, so we don't carry a badge in code compliance. Uh, and so your staff, and that's a conversation for the Board of County Commissioners. So your staff is going out onto properties, uh, when there is a potential violation and working to engage in a cooperative conversation with these property owners. Not as law enforcement. Do we want to address the question on?
Wayne's question is...
I don't know what my question was. Oh, I mean, it is enforcing laws, so it is law enforcement. I mean, you call it whatever you want to call it, but it is an aspect of enforcing laws and codes and...
No badges, no guns.
I understand that, but it still doesn't mean it's not law enforcement.
Right.
It doesn't mean it's not law enforcement, just because you're not properly authorized to do certain, you know...
If you were to issue a citation, how would you do that?
Go for it.
Uh, citations are, uh, in Title Twenty-Six as an opportunity. Civil penalties are what we use now. A citation is a ticket book, uh, and you just fill it out. Uh, once, uh, it's filled out, they have a, a court requirement. Uh, they pay their fee, and that fee goes directly to the court system.
You asked about the drone, about...
Okay, but then it's like commissioning, you know, like, from, for, I mean, for these guys, I don't, I don't know that it, what it, what the difference is, what, if it matters, you know? I know that you're a, you're, you're an official person who's a witness of some type of, you know, crime or, you know, complaint, and then you serve as a witness to the court. But if you're commissioned, I mean, it's not like you're ever going to, nobody's out arresting people for these types of things directly from your seat. So like, yeah, I don't, I don't...
The most they could do is issue a ticket, a citation, and they're able to do that.
But I'm saying, if you were to give somebody a, you know, some type of limited commission, that doesn't, I don't know that that benefits their, you know, their...
Wouldn't make a difference to what they're authorized to do.
What, what about the drone that Wayne asked about?
Legal counsel, would you like to address Commissioner Edwards' question on drones?
Did someone say drones?
Yeah.
No, it's a good topic, Commissioner. I, uh, it's fascinating, and there's a lot of it depends. But if you could just repeat your question, what, what aspect of it that you're interested in, I'd, I'd be happy to give it a shot.
A public right-of-way, public access area, not flying over the property, let's just say you stay away from hovering over the property. What are you allowed to do with a drone? Can you go up a hundred feet? Take a picture of septics, uh, running out on the ground or, uh, oil and grease running out of a car from a dismantled vehicle? You know, you can take all that from outside the curtilage, if you will. So why not?
Yeah. Yeah, so if I understand the question, it's, is, is there an opportunity to use, and I think the, the terminology now is UAV, unmanned air vehicle. I think that's typically what law enforcement, tip, traditional law enforcement will rely upon in a number of jurisdictions where they're operating in public spaces, right-aways, um, and outside of private property. So that's fairly common, as you, you know, as you probably know, Commissioner, uh, having been part of, uh, sheriff's office, that search and rescue, traffic coordination, outdoor, you know, outdoor crimes in the, in the right-of-way. Uh, I think it's even used for SWAT, um, and other emergency, uh, operations where a warrant is, is out there and so they can use, um, higher technology devices. Uh, and I even think fire, um, you know, there's, there's some districts out there, fire districts, that, that employ that for very complex operations on, on, uh, you know, large fires. Uh, so generally speaking, jurisdictions don't employ this type of technology in the arena of civil code enforcement.
They do, or they?
They do not. They do not. And, and it, there's a couple of reasons for that. The, the first is the, the big issue on whether or not this technology can be deployed, um, has to do with the Fourth Amendment protection of privacy and arbitrary intrusion and unreasonable surges. So there's some old case law out there, and all, you know, you always look back at the cases and see what the, in, in this situation, it's the US Supreme Court. Back in the eighties, um, back in the eight, let's see, around nineteen eighty-six, I think, there were some cases where, uh, folks were trying to get images from planes, right? This is before we had technology like this. And there are a couple, there's at least two cases in the eighties that came out and said, hey, you're okay flying a plane. Uh, one is over a thousand feet, one was over four hundred feet. As long, and at that time, you think about it, photos were taken without a whole lot of technology. It was considered to be the same as a naked eye, right? So essentially, they said, hey, this... So essentially, they said, hey, as long as you're meeting FAA requirements, you can take those photos, and even if it's in private property, as long as that camera is using, you know, non-enhancements, right? And that, that case kind of holds up in the eighties, but we kind of flash forward, we've got some more technologies out there. There's another U.S. Supreme Court case in two thousand and one where there was an attempt to use infrared technologies from the same kind of vantage points. And I think in this case, they were even taking them from public right-aways. And you could probably guess what they were doing in this situation, they're looking for signature patterns of marijuana grows, and, you know, so that was being deployed at that time by, by federal agencies. And the court in that case, surprisingly to some, said, no, that's not okay, that's an invasion of privacy, right? So, you know, what, what I think most legal experts look at this and say, okay, well, what does this mean in the future? We now have lots of technology, and, and this UAE technology is, is one of the many things we use. When it comes to satellite imagery, this is, and this is fascinating, because if anyone has spent a little time looking at what's available even on Google Maps, the resolution's fantastic, right? You only have occasional flyby, you know, occasional footage, so it, it starts to, to increase, and I know Brett and Jason, others here, could tell you all about how, how this satellite imagery works. But typically, courts have recognized, both on the federal and state level, that that is admissible evidence. And I think it's just because it's so widely used that courts admit it, and I think that, you know, that case has kind of evolved. Where it's gotten a little complicated is drones, and the, the issue with UAEs or drones is that the general premise is that, under open view, a, a person has no privacy interest to protect a property in an observable place that's open to public view. However, there's a big caveat that enforcement officers and inspectors have only, only a license as a reasonable respective citizen. So typically, you look at the use of drones, and I believe they, they fly, they have a, unlike planes, they, they have to stay below, I think around four hundred, four hundred feet. And by the way, I, I may be off on these technical aspects, but they typically fly lower by, because they don't want them interfering with the planes, right? And it, it's largely considered that if they're below four hundred feet, even if they're in a public accessible area, if they're using photographic evidence within that lower threshold that we think is very close to these homes, that a court is likely to throw that out as an, as an invasion of privacy. And, you know, counties don't want to be the ones to be pushing the envelope. Now, I've had conversations with a number of enforcement officers that want to deploy this. In some cases, they have, and I, I can't remember which program, but I, I've had conversations where we talked about, well, we'd like to have a little more evidence building up to a case that would refer to your office. Can we do a flyby with a, with a plane in order to get a capture, you know, capture a moment of time? And I think, you know, that, that's been useful, but when it comes to drones operating below the four hundred foot ceiling, especially using any kind of enhanced optics, those are areas where jurisdictions usually say, hey, no, keep it limited to public areas. If you're coming in and taking pictures, certainly in a, in a fenced yard, that, that rule is more limiting. So that's, that's it in a nutshell, but.
Okay, let's stick to public areas. I'm talking about on the public roadway, public access area, going up twenty feet, looking over here, seeing septic running out on the ground into the creek. Let's get serious, if we're going to talk about water quality, protecting the environment, let's do something. I don't see anything that prevents that. Or use a selfie stick, lift it up there ten feet, five feet, I don't care. We gotta start doing something that makes sense, and unless you have something specific that really says you can't, can't we sell drones over at Costco for five hundred bucks?
So I, I can't speak to the sensibility of anything, but I will say the court has addressed a scenario where someone put a ladder up over a fence.
Let's take it to court, press the envelope a little bit.
It already has been.
I, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I cannot, I cannot recommend to do something that is contrary to black letter law. And the courts have said that putting a ladder, right, a ladder over a fence is considered an invasion of privacy. So it, it's been answered. That, that question's been answered, right? And so is a selfie stick different than a, than a, than a ladder? Well, I, I can't imagine it could be distinguished, but, you know, it, Commissioner, now, all seriousness, it, it really is, comes down to it, it depends scenario. And the, all these questions are fact-specific. I'm just speaking about the generalities of why we have not been able to say, open up the floodgates, and we're not the only jurisdiction with these problems. But the, these protections of privacy are real, and we do have case law that helps define where that is. And where it's black and white, you know, unfortunately, we, we don't have those options available to us.
Well, I think we should press the envelope, take a, take a chance here. We're talking about saving lives. We've got people mixing up fentanyl on these places, and what, we're gonna let some kid die because we think, oh, maybe some judge might not like it. Let's find out if the judge doesn't like it. Let's be aggressive and take the action. Don't be telling, don't scare our inspectors to the point where they don't want to take an action. It's just law enforcement's the same way. We know which, which guidelines we work under in law enforcement, and you can get away with certain things. Let's walk up to the edge and take that picture, take that action, save that life, save the environment. Let's do something that makes sense, not tie our hands behind our backs without really having a definite, this judge said you're not getting this through Thurston County Courts. Good, maybe we can unelect, unelect that judge. But if it's gonna be a, a case where maybe, let's go up for the citizen, let's represent the citizen, not the creep. We've got too many creeps in charge here in this country, so that's the end of it for me.
We have seven minutes, and I have a series of questions, Commissioners.
Okay.
No? Okay. So my, my question is going back to the organization overview, slide three. I'm curious about the inspection piece of this whole puzzle, because a lot of the, I get a lot of the same calls that Commissioner Mejia gets, and a lot of them are about a neighbor who says, okay, this guy was allowed to do this, but he had a bunch of conditions in his permit, like he had to do stormwater this way, and he had to install piping that way. And they, they claim that, they claim that no, like, we wrote that in the permit, but we never followed up to see that they installed the, all the different parameters the way that the permit required. Or, or, or maybe there wasn't one inspection, but, you know, six months later, they just then did it the way they wanted to do it, and there was never any. So I'm just curious about that. Is there a way to get ahead of those problems, and is there, is that a true? Is there, is that a gap? Is that something we should beef up, the number of inspections we do on, to make sure that permit conditions are complied with, so we don't get those situations?
So, real quick.
Okay.
First off, you're right that our inspectors, so that's part of the, the permit process outside of compliance, our inspectors do what is required in the inspection process, and then once the process is complete, we walk away from that project, appropriately so. What the homeowner does, or the property owner does, once we walk away, if they choose to go back and do things that aren't appropriate, we can't control that. And so it is, it is a gap in terms of we, in a civil society, we can do what we can to keep honest people honest, and that's about it in that, in terms of that. In terms of how we follow up on conditions, that's exactly what code compliance does, is we look back at what conditions may have been part of the permit process and review that with the property owner if they're not meeting.
So that would just be like a normal complaint, and then you'd go, you could go back and open up the permit and say, you were supposed to have done the stormwater drainage this way, but you plowed over the.
I'd also like to add that the Building Development Center, the first bullet up there, is the Center for all three departments and their project reviews. As we go through inspection, you have the building inspectors who are doing life safety and construction, you have your public works inspectors who are doing stormwater, you have your environmental health, doing septics and wells, it's a group system. So the collaboration necessary is very important, and every inspector for each one of these departments has their own responsibility. So if it's a follow-up on a building, for example, the building was constructed at thirty-five feet height, which is the requirement, and they decided to put something on top of the roof for extra storage, a lookout, whatever the case may be, we won't know that they've done that unless we receive a complaint, and that's exactly where code.
So there isn't, there isn't that final, like, making sure that it got built the way that you said it should be done?
There is always a final inspection.
Yes, there is.
Would have to happen after that inspection.
That's correct.
No, we have limited time. If that, so is it fair to say, based, based on the process you've laid out, it seems like an illegal, like you talked about, you talked about in your categories, one of them was. I didn't use someone's.
Food processing.
Zoning. Yeah, you're saying like, okay, so, so like a lot of these things, this process seems like it's, it's geared toward a permanent situation. And I know Commissioner Fournier and I have, have tangled on, together, on like unpermitted, like events, and there doesn't seem to be any way to, to deal with that under the system you've laid out. Is that a fair statement? Like someone just throws an illegal event for a weekend, I mean, by the time you, get you out there and you, I mean, it's over. Like it's something, if it's fleeting, it, it doesn't seem like fleeting violations can be handled by a, by a system that's set up this way, is what I'm trying to get at.
It can't be more difficult, because we don't go out on the site in the middle of a violation, an event, but when we have photographic evidence, we follow up on that evidence and have that as part of the conversation with the violating property owner.
In case they were gonna have events like that in the future.
And we have had cases like that, and we have held permits until they're able to come in and compliance with the use, the activity that there is occurring on the property. So it is tricky, but we do address it.
Okay, and then my last piece was the voluntary compliance agreement. How long do you, do you have a, between that and then taking the next step? Is there a policy about how, like if, okay, you're gonna do this within six months? Well, they don't do it. Okay, do we give them another six months, or do we, like, when do we jump to the next step? Is there, is it case by case, or do you have a policy? Because it just seems like we get a lot of them where people string us along on the voluntary compliance agreements, and nothing ever gets done.
I'll do the quick answer and then hand it over, but the quick answer is if they're working with us to come into compliance.
Forward movement?
Mm-hmm, that's the quick answer.
That's, that's exactly right. So it is case by case, it's all dependent upon the response that we receive from the property owner, and their willingness to make effort to come into compliance.
And, and demonstrable effort, like we've got to see, not just, oh, I'm going to, or I should, or, there's got to be actual movement, they applied for a permit, or they took out the building, or those little things that add up, that demonstrates that they're working with us. So that's the policy. If they're working with us, we'll work to extend their VCA, we'll work to help them find paths and avenues. If they're not working with us, then they go to the next step in the process.
And I will say, if I may elaborate a bit, a voluntary compliance agreement is between the county and the property owner. It's also a little bit of a hammer, meaning it's a self-imposed deadline that they placed on themselves.
That's right.
And it's, that's good evidence and/or information to use if it goes to that next step, prosecuting attorney's office, so on and so forth.
That's right. They can't say they didn't know about it.
Yeah.
They've got a signature that says, I agree that these are problems, and I'm gonna do this in this period of time, and if they don't use it, we do add that to the case file that says, you can't say you didn't know, you signed a document that says you did.
I guess sometime back, we were talking about the possibility of consolidating some of the health violations and CPED, kind of having some kind of a function going together. And I don't know if that's a possibility that we could explore, and that way we wouldn't be draining the general fund all the time, we have different funding sources that way. And, hey Travis, don't mistake my enthusiasm for anything personal, I just want you to know that. I just, I, I love what you're doing, thank you, and I just want to make sure that we solve problems, that's what I'm all about. Anyway, is there some requirement that our staff, is there a law that says our staff has to rat off the grandma that's building a house for grandpa or something, or adding on a bedroom or something like that?
Our staff, our staff doesn't rat off anybody, we receive complaints.
Okay, so there's no requirement that's when staff is out there. Hey, I don't think that, that thing's four feet wider than it was when I was here ten years ago.
CPED policy is to, if there is a violation on the property, whether it's grandma or not, if there is a violation, we do make note of that violation, and if they have an active application, we continue with them on their active application, and then continue, and have that violation go to code compliance. And that was a recent efficiency that was created from the board direction and the due process that we worked with the prosecuting attorney's office to implement.
But there's no law that requires that.
Our code ordinance says that all properties have to meet code ordinance if they're going to continue.
Right, but nothing says you have to turn that in to code enforcement, or, say, say a building inspector.
Our code.
Is there something that says you have to?
A building inspector says what?
Turn in the grandma's edition or something.
Your inspector is out on a site for whatever reason, and they see a clear violation, do they have to submit that to code?
Our code, as implemented by the Board of County Commissioners, says that if there is a code violation, it should be noted.
So yes, they do have to report it.
Okay, since should be noted?
And we do.
Doesn't say it has to be noted.
Excuse me, we don't have the specific language in front of us.
Could you get that for me?
Yes, we definitely can.
Thank you.
If I may, if a building inspector's going out on site, they are there to inspect for the purpose that they're there. They do not go out there, inspect for the purpose that they're there, turn around, take a walk around the property, make an assessment of any possible violation, that does not happen.
We don't do that.
What violation? Let's see what I can find.
Yep.
Thank you.
And people have their perspective, and we don't do that.
Yeah, we don't.
If they see something obvious.
That's right.
I wanted to ask, just, maybe just a follow-up to, to this, right? Because what we're talking about is code compliance for CPED, right? But then we also have public health and, and public works as well, and sometimes there is some confusion with the public of, it's all CPED, is kind of what the public, you know, usually the calls, it's like, well, community planning, economic development came in for a public health-related matter, and it's just that confusion. And so I think there is some merit in having that discussion of like how they intersect, how code compliance with our different departments intersect. And I know that there is a lot of collaboration that goes on with each of the departments, but, you know, I, I would like to have that further conversation. I'll say Moon Road, for example, I know that one is a very popular one, right? But that one has been dinged through community planning, environmental health, probably public works as well, right? And so it's like three different things, and it's like, is there a way to, to streamline when, whenever there's a property that's been dinged for different areas, is there a way to kind of maybe streamline that? So three different departments aren't working on kind of, I know they're working on, on different aspects of kind of the code, but is there a way to kind of, that way it's not taking as much staff time in three different areas? And I know that you're just one out of the three, but I think it's a worthwhile conversation to have in the future.
Noted, we'll set up a work sessions.
So this is an opportunity to me to say, and for staff to say, thank you for our monthly meeting, the Citizens Response Group with the Commissioners Assistance, Public Works, as well as Environmental Health. If there is an opportunity to do collaborative code compliance, it is always taken. Site visits are shared and sent, people are sent from all different departments that could be involved, I'm not, could be involved, a potential violation for their codes. So we are always working together with cooperative compliance, always working together with the other departments.
But you're, but you're right. I mean, I think that there is another, a historical perspective that there are silos within the three different departments, and that is, I would say, at this time, is not taking place. We have high coordination and collaboration. Title Twenty-Six does live within the land use policy, it is a CPED policy, and that has cooperative compliance. The public health, environmental health does not operate under Title Twenty-Six, they operate under the sanitary code, and that would be a conversation to have with environmental health in their process for, you know, our six steps of Title Twenty-Six, what is the corollary in the environmental health realm for enforcement? But functionally, we are highly coordinated, and it can be confusing. When we get to a tough case, we create a case summary that brings all of the information together, all. When we get to a tough case, we create a case summary that brings all of the information together, all the different violations from the different departments, so we can see it in one place. But functionally, I think that we are very efficient and collaborative with the other two departments right now.
But I'm also, well, I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, that potentially the, the concept of, is there an opportunity, given the limited resources and staffing within CPED or environmental health specifically around code compliance, is there an opportunity for some type of cross-training? So that you have a, an individual that goes out, is able to identify the, the land use pieces along with the sanitary code pieces?
Yeah, no, yeah.
So that you don't necessarily, you know, have to take two, three people out for a site visit, you're sending one. So that, that's a different conversation, I think.
Yeah, but that's a good concept. And so we are, just as a pit, a pity in that, because that was part of the conversation, is CPED code compliance is general fund funded.
Environmental health has its own funding.
That's what, that's why I'm thinking of working them together somehow.
I know that there was, Romero had been thinking for a time about combining.
Yes, yeah, we talked about it, didn't we?
Yeah.
I don't know why it didn't go, but.
It just didn't.
Still have to crack that funding nut.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
There has to be a, an nexus between what you charge and what you do.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Special thanks to Travis.
And Scott was here too.
Scott was here too.
Hey Scott, yeah, but he didn't get in on the action.
Travis has got it handled, a complete fake.